We'd like to call the Board of Mayor and City Attorney on Tuesday, 1:17. You can stand up and declare your allegiance. Can you hear me? Ready? And begin.
The flag of allegiance is to the Lord in the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Guys, we, I don't know, we can't hear anything from the podium.
Testing one, two. Can you hear that?
We can hear you, Warren. We cannot hear Annie.
Okay.
Testing, testing.
Can you hear Michael?
We can hear you now, Annie.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Matt. Whatever you did, you're magic. Thank you. Okay. City Manager, the real call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And for the record, we have Scott Campbell on, as well as we have the city attorney and, I mean, city treasurer in the office.
All righty. And are there any announcements or written communications?
I do, Annie. Who? I've got it here somewhere, Annie. There was a notary at my desk today and everything got shifted around, so hang on a second, please. Just the one announcement is that Transit Concept, our buses, has added a second bus daily due to the demand because they were leaving people at the stops. So we have one bus that runs from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then the second one is running during the peak hours, which is 10:00 to 4:00. That's my announcement, and I'll wait till the other time.
Okay, great. That's good news. Okay. Department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. I've got a couple of items for you. Our Active Transportation Plan demonstration projects, we had those out yesterday and today. So we rolled out two concepts. The first was a creative crosswalk, and we deployed it at two locations. One was at the Metropole mid-block crosswalk by the old Vons there. The other was at the crosswalk on Pebbley Beach Road by the trailhead. These two temporary pieces, these were temporary pieces of fabric that were attached to the pavement, and the one in Pebbley didn't last very long because of the turning movements on, so we pulled that up right away because the fabric was taped down on the pavement, and it was not smooth enough in that location. But we did get a good look at the one at the Metropole location, had a lot of really good comments for that. And then the second thing that we rolled out was the parklet, and the first place we put that was out there by the lobster trap in that frontage. And it was made out of plastic, so it's a concept, and really it's just supposed to give you kind of that sense of space if you did a parklet of that size or larger, where it takes the place of where the parking would be, and you could see if that was a permanent installation of how that could facilitate activating, you know, more of that area in a sidewalk or even for commercial businesses. So the parklets have various uses, you know, they can be just a place to hang out, or they could be for commercial use, as you've seen them roll out during many cities here along Southern California. That's where the restaurants ended up in. So, and then the other location that we had was right there by the county building, and we rolled out that, and then we had to send everything back today. So if you're interested in providing comments on that on the city's website, cityofavalon.com/ATP, the link for the comments is not up today, but it will be so that you can directly get to that link and then provide comments. Please do, because it's going to be part of our plan.
They, I just wanted, they, it looked really cute.
Yeah. So, and with the creative crosswalks, realize, you know, if you've been down Pine Avenue in Long Beach, you see what they are, you know, and they definitely, what they do is a high-vis crosswalk, but then we're adding the artistic elements, everything wrapped into one, you know, so it's more of a sense of place, more inviting for pedestrians, activating those pedestrian areas.
Before you move on, just quickly, but I don't know if anybody's looked at the skatepark and the murals that have been put up there. They are incredible, and that's all with local artists. It's with Jen Diaz, Jason, and then another young man. They're very creative and very lovely, so if we decide to go that way, we've got some fantastic local artists that we could use. I've got-
Perfect.
The comments on the parklet was not real favorable with everybody I spoke to.
Yeah.
Well, the one in front of the lobster trap is like, okay, we just lost two or three parking spaces, blah, blah, blah. And then knowing that the material could be something different if we did some, because, you know, that thing was off balance, I mean, hopefully, hopefully, nobody wanted to sit in it, and it was a little more level when it was in front of the library. But, I mean, and then one of the concerns is it doesn't have any shade cover, so, you know, we talked a long time ago about just some nice picnic benches with whatever, I don't know why you need to call it a parklet. Anyway, so there will be more discussion, because, I mean, that thing sitting maybe perhaps next to the Wrigley Plaza stage, you know, is lovely. I mean, does a parklet mean you have to be taking away parking necessarily?
No, it's just a place, you know, it's at some space where we're repurposing a space to be more pedestrian, you know?
Right, right.
It could be parking, it could be just a, you know, a widened piece of pavement-
Right.
-that we're underutilizing, or we, you know, we can, you still, one of the things, if you really get this stuff right, is you move the parking in other locations, and you try to find where you can squeeze something in and try to use the best use of your space, highest and best use. You always hear me saying that 24 hours a day, you know, and creatively, they're doing it where they're even using space for parklets, but then they're allowing parking in them at other times of the day in major cities, you know, and they, so they pull those tables out of there or whatever is in there-
Yeah.
...and then allow it to be used for parking, so, you know, that's highest and best use of space. More to come on that, though, you know?
Yeah, okay.
When we get the ATP plan in front of you, then, you know, and then you'll see all the comments that come from that, and then we can decide what we want to implement.
No, but let me ask a question. That parklet that you had, that is purchasable, or that's just-
That is called the kit of parts that you, the Active Transportation Plan out of SCAG, they put, they have like 12 different demonstration projects in this container, and then, so we picked two to implement here that seem to fit for, you know, our community. And so, yeah, it was just for massing, so you can see how that would look, just to get, you know, some interest in it, you know, interest in the discussion of, you know, what's the possibilities here, you know? And really, that's good, just like we demoed the roundabouts out here. It's proof of concept, and people can't sometimes visualize it until they see something like that, and then we can move on from there.
Okay. And it was cityofavalon.com backslash?
Yes, ATP.
Okay.
And then the other item I have is concerning saltwater service, you know, throughout the community, but the saltwater service line, we did a, there was a major repair done at the one in Canyon Terrace HOA, and that's been a problem for years. There's been low pressure in the HOA, it affects a lot of units. Of course, they're paying the fees for the saltwater, but they, you know, a lot of them were at the point, the only way they'd get pressure to their toilet was hooking up fresh water to their toilets, you know, in the interim. So they took on a major repair that congratulated the HOA for doing that and really getting down to the root cause of that. And really what that was, was their service lateral connection. So I just want to expand on that so that the community understands, because we have a lot of questions about service laterals, both for sewer and for saltwater. So the repair was made at the lateral by Jordal Construction, and it was paid for by the HOA. And the HOA had lost saltwater pressure to multiple units over a period of time. So what, who pays for that and the responsibility is defined by Avalon Municipal Code. And under Section 6 of the Municipal Code, it says, "It defines a city's saltwater system shall mean the public-owned property, including the distribution of saltwater within the city, including intake piping, pumps, reservoir, land, supply lines," that's the main lines that go down the middle of the road, "fittings and equipment related to such elements," okay? And the fittings that they're talking about is like the fittings, like the 90-degree ones like we replaced on Crescent, that's on our main line. Now, the private saltwater lines are defined as, "Shall mean the privately-owned piping or line connecting a building, collection of buildings, such as a common-interest development in HOA or other structures," structures of the city's saltwater system, so that main line out there. Now they're coming out in the road with a service line, and includes the service connection Y or saddle at the supply line. This was an interesting one, because right at the main line, and what was first reported to me was there was ductile iron pipe that extended away, and then it seemed like somebody put some ductile iron pipe in, and then they connected a service line to it. So, you know, under that instance, we would have accepted that ductile iron pipe, but that was not, was indeed, was not the case when we got out there with our city crews and looked at it. It was just a cast iron fitting or ductile iron fitting, there was a T. So it's the same thing as a saddle or a Y. It is only put on that main line to serve that, so that was why it was their responsibility to pay for that. And it's why, that's, and it is, all those, the road cut, the backfill, the, all of those things that you would think that would be the city's responsibility, by our code, is the responsibility of the property owner, because the city's responsibility is to plot, to provide that main, that water in that main line, okay? And then anybody comes along the way and says, "I want to hook up," okay, it's your responsibility to provide that line, provide that connection point, and maintain that. So then there's one other thing I want to say about that. The installation and maintenance, okay? So property owner's obligation, each property owner shall, at the property owner's expense, inspect, maintain in good working order, repair, rehabilitate, and replace as necessary the property owner's private saltwater lines in such a manner to prevent corrosion, clogging, and figure the lines. And, you know, we have a lot of corrosion within that saltwater system, you know, it's just the nature of the beast, you know, and so, and it's clear out there, it's still that's the property owner's responsibility to do that. Okay? And the private saltwater lines are not part of the city wall system, saltwater system. The private saltwater lines of the property, of the property owner are not part of the city's saltwater system. Nothing in this chapter shall be interpreted as changing the nature, private saltwater lines, or incorporating in the city's saltwater system. So it's very clear, it's the property owner's responsibility. I know when those costs are put in front of you, and especially that, you know, HOA has lots of units, so they can spread it out amongst many owners, but, you know, a private property owner and single-family residents, it's a pretty big hit to do that. It doesn't happen very often to you, but our system is getting old, you know, our main lines are still in good shape, but some of the service laterals are not, and that's why you start getting those whole large costs. So, and that's the same thing for sewer, you know, so you should have those expectations as a property owner, that those costs, you know, at some point, you're going to have to keep, maintain those and repair those things. Any other questions?
Just a question on the directional of that. So, I'm assuming the sewer line flows down the hill from the point of entry with low pressure happening at the HOA, and then impacts the surrounding neighborhood as well, because they're all coming from that same main source primarily?
Yes.
Is there a way to create any level of bypass eventually, or create a plan that would create bypass to not impact almost, almost how they have with the vaulting that they did with the electrical system, where they're putting it into smaller grid spaces so that it makes it so that it's not impacting such a wide neighborhood when you have to deal with something like that?
And that's what the isolation valves do.
Right.
And we replaced, five years, or four years ago, four, 22 of those. We, in this last year, we replaced four.
Right.
And, you know, you see, and it's our goal to get out there, maybe this next year, get six more, and just keep on rolling on that so that we don't have to bring a contractor over here. We have trained our city crew, we have a very good water crew now, Jeffrey and Ennis running that, and so we're able to replace those valves ourselves. And the critical valve that we replaced was at the Catherine Booster Station at the reservoir out there in the middle of Crescent, and as we replace more of those, we isolate smaller and smaller areas, you know, put smaller and smaller areas out of service at a time. So we're focusing in the areas around the commercial areas, because, you know, those are the times when we have visitors on the island, we're going to shut down hotels, restaurants, and all those services, so we're trying to focus on getting those, so we can isolate the small areas, so we don't disrupt, you know, multiple people. Okay?
Okay. Is, okay.
And I, in the Public Works report that we got from Jamie, which was really nice, I saw the crosswalks and the painting of the crosswalks, are there more in line to be painted?
Yes. Everything in the whole community is Jeffrey's role in that out, but he wanted to get up to the school.
Right.
And so that was why we chose that next, and then we want to get all the other crosswalks. It's going to be some early morning work out there with some of those, like on Metropole, you know, so that we can get out there, but, you know, we're doing it pretty quickly and pretty quietly, and that's another good thing, that we've bought the paint sprayer that we purchased, and we have that on a trailer, we have trained all our crew members how to use it, so we have redundant resources, and you see the excellent work they're doing now. So you'll see some of those markings get freshened up, but we'll add some other markings too, that makes it safer, because you'll actually, like I was talking, a little bit of centerline striping here or there, just so you can get to an area and you go, there's something changing here, there's a piece of centerline. Not that we want centerlines or make it look like a major city down the whole road, but we want to make those areas where people have to be safer to realize there's a different look, difference of the place.
I know there was a question on, between the arcade and the Glenmore Plaza. That's just pavers, and there's really no paint left there, so with the people in the golf carts kind of not figuring out where they can and cannot go, and then turn it, you know, anyway, that.
Yeah, that area down, down in the waterfront area, down, and that needs a lot of work in that, and we need a lot of curb painting too, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So it's on our list, it won't be long, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Bob, just one more question on that, I'm so sorry. With that, and then also looking at the ATP and looking at the creative crosswalks, a comment that I remember Jordan had made at one point was talking about the life of the ground paint, that it seemed that we were having to replace ground paint at a quicker pace than most people on the mainland would have to.
Yes.
And he was curious to know if that had to do with the output of vehicles on the island and the level of cleanliness of those vehicles, or the amount of pedestrian traffic, and what was causing that. I don't know if that's something we need to also just address with that ATP plan of having, is it going to turn faded quickly, similar to the sidewalk, the ground paint that we use for crosswalks, is something we need to seal or do something with? Would an inlay be smarter than painting possibly for duration? Just something to think about.
Those are all good questions. It looks to me the product they're using at Pine is some type of epoxy coating. It's definitely very durable, you look at the amount of traffic, so I think whatever we put down is going to be durable, but we'd investigate what is the best product. Some of our paints that we use is just paint, and what you're seeing in other communities is thermoplastic-
Yeah.
...where that actually eats into the pavement a little bit, and, you know, that would require a contractor to come over to do it, so. I mean, we've stepped up our game with this new paint sprayer, and Jeffrey has researched paint types, and he just got a brand-new shipment in here within this last month, so hopefully this stuff stays down a while, but also we're faster at it now-
Yeah.
...because we mechanized it, so.
Yeah.
It does make the community look better, safer, you know, because it sharpens up. Even if your road is not in very good shape, if you have fresh markings that are sharp, it makes it look good.
Yep. No, absolutely, thank you.
Any other councilmembers have a comment? Cindy, okay, excellent.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Oren Karstarfen, Avalon Harbor Master. Pretty much a ditto of last week with the inner harbor busy all week, selling out Friday, and then Descanso and Hamilton selling out early in the day on Saturday. Much of the overflow was forced into Casino Anchorage and up to White's Landing. Here are the numbers, arriving boats Friday through Sunday, patrol moored 353 boats for a total of 1,243 nights. Since my last report to council on August 3rd, patrol did two vessel accident reports, responded to seven medical incidents, did 27 warn and advisements of municipal code violations, and issued two citations. Patrol also did 51 facility security patrols and 38 public assist. On Monday, August 16th, 2021, Officer Stephen Carroll did attend the Los Angeles Region Maritime Search and Rescue Meeting in Long Beach, which promotes good working relationships between the United States Coast Guard, Los Angeles, lifeguard paramedics, and other local agencies such as the Avalon Harbor Patrol. And that's my report.
So tell me about water quality. Did we have some posters up the other day?
Water quality?
We had one mayor posted to the left of the pier on, as you're looking out at it, and it was due to birds.
Oh, okay.
So we'll be contacting our Falcon person to see if we have them roosting underneath the pier.
Oh, okay.
According to the numbers that we got from the county.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council, Captain Joe Badali from the Sheriff's Department, and happy to report that yesterday we had our Crime Management Forum with our Division Chief and our commanders, as well as all my colleagues over town, all the other captains in our division, and happy to report, looking at our stats, that we had no increase in our thefts and theft-related crimes, even given the increase in population that we've experienced as of late, so very happy to report that. We have some personnel moves taking place, we have one retirement, one transfer, and two new people coming onboard next month, and I'll be bringing them to council, and you guys will be able to meet them, but very diversified and experienced deputies that are coming over who truly want to work out here, so they'll be coming onboard as part of the team. Also, we are preparing for our Labor Day weekend and our wine mixer staffing with increased deputies that are going to be hired, as well as our volunteer reserve deputies, who will be no cost to the city, who will be assisting us during those busy times as well. And that's pretty much all I have.
Any councilmembers have any questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Good evening, Mayor and council, Michael Allegria, Fire Chief. The guys have been busy, they're going on another one right now. They were up to, I think, 10, 11 calls last Saturday, with the average being at least five to seven a day, but that day was, I think they had three back-to-back-to-back medevacs. Parking, I've been still trying to crack down on parking. We're getting better, people are, Little Antonios are still a problem, terraces, a couple other spots, but we're working on it and trying to get people not to park in the red. The question, I, can you please move your vehicle, and they look at me and they say, "Why?" And so we have a little discussion, and they, some move, some don't, and if they didn't, I gave them a ticket.
Yeah.
Other than that, or there was some discussion, our ISO rating is currently a four. It's only 25% of fire departments in the country are four or below. Other than that, any questions?
So our ISO-
I just have, I have one question. Chief, how, what is the methodology being used, and what is actually happening along Casino Way? Because it's my understanding that Casino Way in general is now being painted with a red stripe?
Yes, that's been Public Works striping those.
Working with you, though.
And they've consulted with us, and we've talked about where all the lines are.
Okay, you can see the layout that's out there, it's roped off, you know, so we put a piece of rope, and then we mark it with marking paint, and then you'll see our striper. So it's going to have red fire lane parking against the waterfront, and we want to take advantage of the areas that are widened pavement up against the K-rail there, so we created the parking along the K-rail, because that allows for two through lanes to be there, but allows, you know, around, I think it was about 12 parking spots, to be in those widened areas, because we can't have parking on both sides of the road. And before, we restricted it right at the K-rail, and there was an opportunity of excess pavement right there to be able to put that parking in, so that we have a straight line there for emergency vehicles or for the larger vehicles to find their way through there without weaving through the parked cars.
Thank you.
Any other questions, other captain? Or chief, I should say. Thank you.
Matt Baker, Finance Department. Happy to report, June visitor-driven revenues have been posted to the Finance Page's website. June was a unprecedented, record-setting month as far as TOT revenues are concerned. June, TOT exceeded the best July we had on record, so it really was something else. Early reports show July of this year should be a similar, maybe not quite as strong, but a similarly strong month. Nightly moorings were up about 10% in July, and so, and a few TOT have come in for July, so it should be a strong month, maybe not as strong as May and June, but certainly should be ahead of where we had estimated in the budget. I do plan on presenting in more detail kind of a budget to actual comparison as I prepare the financials for the audit, but in general, I would expect that our starting reserve position to, in the general fund, would be higher than what I had presented at the budget by about $600,000, so not an insignificant amount. Kind of going back and explaining how my estimates could be as low as, you know, where we ended up, I generally was looking at TOT and other visitor-driven revenues for the months of May and June. Those were months I had to estimate for as part of the budget purposes. I was estimating those revenues to come in around 90% to 95% of pre-COVID 2019 figures, and in, at least in TOT's case, both months exceeded May of 19 and June of 19 by 60%, so 160% of normal, so, you know, I do try to be conservative in the estimates, I don't try to be that conservative, but it really has been an unprecedented couple of months as far as visitor-driven revenues are concerned. The one last thing I wanted to also point out is the state auditor did recently release their High Risk Cities or their report on city financial risk. I am happy to report that Avalon did get a low score, but I would want to caution that their methodology for doing the risk rating is just looking at general fund activity. Avalon is somewhat unique in that the size of our enterprise funds are near comparable to the size of our general fund, and while our general fund is close to a healthy reserve level, some of our enterprise funds can't say the same thing, but certainly with the strong visitor revenues and with the budget that was adopted, we should be building towards those reserve targets hopefully quicker than I'd previously presented.
Excellent.
With that, I'm working on the various audits that we have going on in the Finance Department, but if there are any questions?
No, thank you, it's just great news. Thank you very much. Assistant City Manager, would you like to report anything?
I just have one quick, more of an announcement. The Regular Planning Commission meeting that is scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled. is scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled originally. That was due to staff being unable to make it to that meeting, and as such, it has been rescheduled for the following Wednesday. So Wednesday, August 25th, will be essentially the, it'll be a special planning commission meeting, but it's, it'll be in place of the regular planning commission meeting. So anybody who would normally tune in tomorrow, tune in next Wednesday, and we'll be addressing a couple items of concern.
Great, thank you. And City Manager?
Yes, Mayor and council, I did receive four written communications. One of them I forwarded on to you, I received on Saturday, and that was regarding fire protection Class Two being increased to fire protection Class 10, which affected the insurance rates. So I did pass that on to all of you. And then we have one item, one written correspondence that has to do with all the items 60 rates, everything that had to do with noise, and then one petition that you all received. That's item number seven. And then I received, as I was coming into the chambers, a letter from some employees in support of the vaccine mandate, so that's item number nine. And then Councilmember Lavelle asked me to look into the county's eviction moratorium, I believe, the deadline, and that is still at September 30th as of right now. My last week, staff, myself, and Lutfi had a phone conversation with Civitas. They were the ones working with the chamber for the T-bid. We asked our questions, tried to receive some clarification on it. They are going to redo their document, make a couple amendments to it, and then hopefully it's either the second meeting in September or the very latest, the first meeting in October. My last thing would be that the city is really trying hard to crack down on illegal golf cart rentals and CUPs. So every time we receive a complaint, we're tracking them, as well as code out on the road is definitely seeing them and taking pictures, and then we issue the admin site.
Yeah, great, thank you. Any questions of the City Manager? The City Attorney?
I will have some great news later on tonight. Trust me. Stay tuned.
Under what item? Under what item?
I'm not going to tell you.
Well, because if it's not posted, you can't talk about it. If it's not a regular agenda item.
No action is required.
Okay, good. Excellent. Okay, council member report. Anybody have one?
Just tomorrow, I will be attending a meeting with Sunny Peak from the Governor's Office on broadband infrastructure, along with the LA Orange County Broadband Consortium, Jim Luth Yohan also, to review next steps for Avalon. There was a public forum held last week through Congressman Lowenthal's office, and Avalon and Catalina were brought up a few different times throughout that discussion. So hopefully on the radar again of the right people and getting some, some action happening soon.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I got nothing.
Okay. Yes, Anya?
I got a couple things. I spoke to Peter Griffith, which was our Census Point of Contact, and he helped me and showed me how to navigate through our community's demographics, but he did also want to let us know that it will be his last day at the end of the month. So if we need any help with census numbers or any demographics, we have a new point of contact, and I do have her information, and her name is Luz Castillo. But if anyone does have any questions, they can also go on the Census website. They do have a little part where it's ask.sensus.gov, and you can just send in your question, put in your contact information, email, phone number, whatever it is you'd like, and they'll contact you with the information you need. I did also have the California Contract Cities Legislative Meeting. It was canceled last week, so I will have it tomorrow. And I am also attending the National Association of Latino Elected Officials Summit over Zoom, and that's next Tuesday.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protem?
I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Okay. I'd just like to report, minutes with the mayor will be tomorrow at 4 o'clock, so tune in. And now we'll go to oral communication. This is an opportunity for people in the public to speak on items not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. Do we have any takers on, Michael, or anybody in the audience? Or Captain Badali, I'll call you.
I do have one comment electronically. This one is from Paul Burchell. He says, hello, this is Paul from the Avalon Library. I wanted to announce that Avalon Library is officially going fine-free. That means we will no longer be charging overdue fines for late books. And if you've been afraid to come into the library because you owe fines, all you have to do is come in, swap up to the Ask Us desk, and let us know that you're here to get your fines waived. We'll wipe all your overdue fines, and you can use your library card, as was intended, to take out movies and books and use our online resources such as Libby, Uber Drive, and Canopy. I am really, really pleased about this permanent new phase. Fees will still apply for lost and heavily damaged books and materials, of course, but if you've been holding on to something because you're worried about being fined when you return it, just bring it back, and we'll wipe your record as clean as a baby's face. And if you're participating in the upcoming election, the vote-by-mail box in front of the Avalon Library has been unlocked for voter use. You can cast your, you can bring your ballot and insert it in the box, and it'll be safely protected. The box is emptied regularly by appropriate officials. At the moment, I'm not sure whether it's sheriff deputies or representatives from the Recorder-Register's Department, but the ballot will be safely transported to be counted when the time comes. I was so pleased by the brief construction of the little parklet that appeared on the street outside the library courtyard this morning. It looks totally beguiling, excuse me, with its fun plastic seating and tables. I was kind of excited to have my lunch there. However, I was also amused how, in the mid-afternoon, after assisting a line of several customers, I stuck my head outside the door, and the entire parklet collection of tables, stools, and umbrellas had totally vanished. It was like Brigadoon. Bring it back anytime, I say.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. Okay, I guess we shall move on to the consent calendar.
Okay, and before I move to consent, I just wanted to make the announcement also that we are pulling item number five, which is the approval of 383 East Whitley Encroachment, and that is from the applicant. They will reschedule at a future council meeting. So there are four items on the consent calendar. We have minutes from the August 3rd, 2021 regular City Council meeting. We have warrants for a total expenditure of $759,067.36 for the time period of July 26 through August 6, 2021. Number three is to adopt an ordinance for the City of Avalon amending Chapter 21 of Title V of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding the operation of sidewalk vendors. Number four is to authorize the City Manager to execute a lease amendment for a total of 182.15 square feet with Original Antonio's Pizzeria and Deli. That's adding 145.15 square feet to his current lease.
Okay. Anybody want to pull anything, or is there a motion?
Can I, I'd like to pull item three for discussion, please.
Sure.
And with that, I'd make a motion to, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Please pull item four for discussion, and with that, I'm happy to make a motion to approve items one through three on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I don't know who.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes, me.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All right, Cindy?
Um, I guess the, so the, Mr. Tucci had something already allocated to him previously, which was on, I guess it would be the south side of the sidewalk on Sumner, previously, right, where he could have, I think it was four tables?
It was right kissing the side of his building, yes.
Right. So are, is that still going to be allowed, or are we now moving it to the city, to the city park bench side?
Correct. He's requesting it to go over to the city bench area, so that's on pages two and three of your pictures that you received, and then going around the bend there.
I mean, I guess I want to ask staff, do you think that this is, have you guys gone out to sea on a busy night? Is this a better flow of traffic to take away that seating?
This is what's been out there, I think, right?
During the COVID time when we were allowing it. I think Cindy, so far, it's worked out to be a nice flow there. I've seen it a couple times at night. I like that he has condensed it instead of having the extra tables in other areas, and there will be certain things in his lease, as I noted at the bottom of our staff report, you know, as far as keeping it clean with the trash, the pressure washing the area from the greasy food and...
Okay, I just remember it being on both sides, so I just wanted to say, I think, according to the pictures, it feels to me as though the flow will be a lot better, and it looks like they'll be able to line up a little bit better to order the slices of pizza, which I was in favor of. But I just wanted to clarify, because I didn't think it would be appropriate to do both sides of that little walkway.
No.
So I have no further issues with this.
And I have a question. What is the monthly square foot rate that other people are paying?
If it's open to the public, it's $1.25 a square foot, Annie. That's what it would start out as, and then that goes up to $350 if you are an interior space.
So they're actually paying the same amount as they were paying with our other lease, which is $1.32 to add this?
Yes, with the CPI since he started that new lease, yes.
Oh, got it.
And there's something in here to address the garbage better?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that is a huge problem.
Yes.
And I'm feeling really sorry for Eddie Vega having to empty their trash cans, where a lot of that comes, not all of that, but a lot of that comes from them. So I'm glad that addressed better. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second?
I'll second, if somebody didn't already do that.
No, you're good.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
And Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Okay, the next three items on general business are kind of all tied together. You can either refer to it as noise pollution or entertainment, however you'd like to look at it. The first one we will be discussing will be the horns in the harbor from the boats. The second one would be amplified music in the commercial downtown area, and the third one is amplified music from residences. So on item six, which is the sounding of the horns, I will say that this has started during our whole COVID time, and I, I think originally, how we used to go out and clang our pots and pans and do things at the harbor, that was their way. It was the end of a day, and they started it, and has snowballed and morphed to more of, everybody participating, it's kind of a, it's expanded. And I think it's a nice thing personally in the harbor to hear. When I did time it a few times, it was only 10 to 20 seconds, and of course, Saturday, it was over 60 seconds. But anyway, so we'll just wait for the council to discuss it and provide direction. I do want to just remind the council that whatever changes that you might make, that we have to be able to enforce it.
Right.
And currently, there is no noise ordinance that applies to the harbor.
Comments, council?
I just want to add that I also heard from the yacht club today that they did, according to the yacht club, their participants did start doing this at 5:00 PM during the time of COVID, when we started opening up. So it was something, and I've heard various stories that they did this four years ago. I don't know what all that is about, but I did hear from the yacht club today that this was in response to the essential workers in town, and it just seemed a more appropriate time for them at 5:00 than it was at 8:00, which is when the town had kind of chosen that time. So I, I think, I timed it a couple times recently and have, I think I got 34 seconds, and then the longest one I've heard in the last two weeks was just over a minute. So I, and it, you know, I haven't been following it. You hear it, it happens, and all of a sudden it's over. So I would venture to say that the cannon might be a little bit overzealous, but if the rest of the council had wanted to allow for the cannon, then I would just like to say, every time we have a marlin tournament or a fishing tournament, I would like the cannon to be able to be used for that, if we're going to allow it for this. So that's my take on it. I don't personally feel as though, and I have not heard any, I've heard one complaint on the horns. So that's my two cents.
I kind of like it when they do it, and I know it's 5:00.
Yeah.
I'll also go, oh, it's 5:00.
Somewhere.
Somewhere, yeah.
I have no problem with, with the horns at all, knowing from where it started. The other thing is, I don't have a problem with them firing a cannon on Saturdays only. They're going to have their closing ceremony within a month or so, right, Cindy? The closing ceremony's in September?
Yeah.
So we're talking, we're talking about a month. So I'd say Saturdays through the end of the summer and keep toting those horns.
I don't have an issue with the horns at all. I think it's actually a kind of a cool thing. It has morphed into a happy hour slash thank you celebration. It did not start that way. It started as a very political rally moment two and a half years ago. So personally, I was not a fan of it at first, because that's how it started one weekend, and to have to see the faces of people in town, looking at what the people who were honking those horns were supporting, knowing the majority of people that work in town, was quite angering. I don't think that's the intent of it now. I think the majority of people are extremely positive in how they're using it. It's great. I do worry about the amount of waste product coming from birds into the harbor when that cannon goes off. So the cannon does concern me more than the horns do. I also don't think you can enforce people not honking their horns in the harbor at a specific time, and I don't know how we would have the staffing to do that. So that personally does not, I don't have any issue with this. I think it's great. I think it's fun. I think it freaks people out a little bit, similar to the 12 o'clock siren at the end of the month. It's short. It's a great conversation starter, so definitely use it for that, and I'm fine with them moving forward with it. I don't even think it's something that we should be limiting seasonally. If you want to honk your horn at 5:00, go ahead. Have fun. Lay on. Do it. It's fine.
Okay, what do you say about the cannon?
The cannon is the only thing that concerns me, and the only reason that concerns me is I'm worried about the waste. I know people, I've had a couple people complain about their pets freaking out, similar to what a fireworks show would do to them, but luckily on a much shorter duration.
One bam.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
Yeah, no, I know. But it's, I mean, if you're in any neighborhood with any pets, you hear them start going off and barking, and half of them are at home by themselves and not with people. So, you know, I don't know if it makes sense to look at that alone, but the horns are pretty loud. People know it's 5:00. I don't know if for special holidays you want to do the cannon, but, you know, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if anyone has any, yeah.
Excuse me, Lisa, if I might just make a few comments. Generally speaking, the noise complaints that the harbor deals with are generally later at night, and we deal with generator complaints and things that fall clearly within the ordinances. When it comes to the horns, I would say more than most of the public, it's a celebration moment there. And I've heard a number of different reasons for it, but it's first responders, happy hour, just a number of different things. We, in general, the Harbor Patrol is promoting courtesy to others. So if you're blasting your horn, and you've got another vessel in front of you, if it's disturbing them, we'll usually just try to, if someone mentions it to us, then we'll try to go over and talk to the vessel and just say, hey, listen, you know, this family in front of you didn't appreciate that. So a lot of it, we can talk through it. It's not the end of the world. And I just also want to point out that the clubs in general, but especially the yacht club there, they work with us. So it's like, if we pick up the phone and we say we have a problem with this, it's, they're very receptive.
The level of communication is really high. Like, I don't think if we asked them to not do it, that they would say, oh, no, we're going to keep doing it.
Yeah.
They would be responsive, I would think. They would be responsive, I would think.
And I mean, as you can imagine, anybody, any one of us who, if we had a cannon, we would like to blow it off. In, in with, when you think of the yacht club and, and their traditions and things like that, in general, they do at the beginning of the year and the end of the year. I think they did light it off on Saturday, but we have to keep in mind Saturdays are extremely busy. There's a lot of noise in town. There's bands playing everywhere. There's a lot going on. So just trying to keep everything in context. I hope that helps you.
Okay, and I would say let's allow them to do it on Saturdays and keep the horns honking. That's just me.
That sounds good.
That sounds good.
And I just, one more thing I wanted to mention. The other side of it was with, with the animals, like it said in the report. So there are some people that have rescue dogs and, and other animals and, and it can have an effect on those animals. So anyways, thank you.
Okay, and then let's, since we're, well, I guess it would be under the bands because, okay, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, I love it, but the bands on the boats, which the yacht clubs bring over a few, you know, bands on the boats, do we have a problem with that? Let's take that out.
So the yacht club has worked with us every time with the band on the boat. And our main goal is to keep the fairways and navigable waters available to the public, to the public. So in general, you don't see it on the, if it's been approved by the harbor, it's on the outer moorings. A couple of times we've had something just occur that had nothing to do with, as far as I know, the yacht club or the harbor department or the city of Avalon. It was just something that occurred on somebody's boat that they thought it would be cool to do.
Yeah, yeah, good, okay. All righty. Is number six over with? Yes, Anya, Cindy, we're all on the same page?
I'm good with keeping it as is and Saturday, the cannon, if they choose through the summer.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would even say Saturdays and holidays because Fourth of July or Labor Day or the start of their season aren't going to fall on those.
And I'm not thinking we're wanting to make some big old resolution ordinance on it. We're just kind of, this is kind of how we see it rolling out.
The question I do have on the bands is if they're not permitted, if they haven't been approved ahead of time on boats, should that be something that is a requirement to operate?
Well, how do you shut them down if already when they're playing?
Stop playing.
I mean, I, I think or and only would stop them if it was absolutely obnoxious or something crazy, right?
If, if it starts to create a crowd that is blocking the fairways, then it becomes an issue with us.
Okay, okay, good, okay. All righty, item number seven.
Item number seven is a discussion regarding the noise of amplified music in the downtown commercial establishments. So I, I don't think it needs much of an introduction. So you have received a petition from surrounding residents, which you all were provided. I don't know how many are on there because it's not numbered.
Some of them are two and three are the same household as well, you know?
I believe there are several people in the audience would like to speak to.
Yeah. Well, do we want to have them speak to it first?
Two minutes, two.
Yes, please.
Okay, and two minutes. Who's first?
Mayor, City Council, Tim Winslow, two 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 Catalina Street. The petition that I circulated was for the peripheral residents, Sumner, Catalina Street, and Descanso, and some other residents that are very close to the plaza. Last year, we suffered this band all summer long. We, we got no relief. We have to close our windows and our doors. And I have new windows and new doors from Vons supposedly to keep sound out. It doesn't stop the sound. It sounds like it's in our front room. The people who live on East Whitley are complaining. I didn't go there, but I was told that they're complaining and people are complaining on Facebook, which I don't use. I have a new decibel reader. When you stand on my balcony and I'm about three hundred feet away from the band, it registers above sixty. It, it, it's in the high sixties. And when the drummer plays and the acoustic guitar plays, it spikes to seventies, low seventies, but seventies. I have, I have taken this petition around and the people almost grab it out of my hand to sign it. They're all upset. I'm upset because I've called the sheriff's department three times and apparently they haven't cited anybody. I don't know whether the sheriff's department has a decibel reader, but I, I think that you can check on that. I'm, I'm not just a resident, I'm a former deputy sheriff here on the, on the island. We had the same thing happening at, am I to stop?
Yeah. Sorry, Tim, I'm trying to stop it.
Well, one last thing. Solomon's Landing had a band and the residents were all complaining. Donnie and I went there and told them to quiet it down. They said they would, but they didn't. The second night we went there and we cited the band. The waitress that I knew there indicated that the band was making good money and they, they can absorb the, the cost. The fourth night we went there, we cited the band and Al Solomon, and it stopped.
Yeah, okay.
There, there are other bands in town, but I'm, I'm only interested in the one that's affecting the peripheral. And.
Okay, I got it.
And I, and I, I think it's more of a nuisance than anything else.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
Hi there, John Vickers, three thirty-two Metropole. I just want to, I'm not a public speaker, so if I sound a little nervous, it's because I am. For starters, Tim, you're talking about the band from last year. We're not the band from last year, to get that straight. We have done our best, we, the Islenya is our band here, to turn our speakers away. We've got a decibel reader there at the restaurant. We take our readings, they've all been well under sixty. We stop before ten o'clock. The response we've gotten from the locals and the visitors has been tremendous. It gives people something to do. We've got, we've got families from little bitty kids all the way to their great grandparents out there dancing, having a good old time, not causing a nuisance, or at least we're not trying to. If this were to go away, you have people that are going to lose their livelihoods. We, we get these, these bookings through the, through the, through the summer to help sustain us through the winter when things are really, really slow. You all know how it is. And if we were to lose this, we're, we're going to put a lot of people out of work. And, and that's not good, but with, with what's going on, I feel it's helping to, to rebuild our economy here. We've got people working, spending money, paying taxes. We're not having any trouble. Everyone's having a nice time. It's a good family atmosphere there. And, yeah, I guess that's it. And, and again, this has never been meant to be a retirement community. From George Chateau all the way to William Wrigley, it's always been a resort community. And it's always been intended to be that way. And so it's helped us to give the people something to do.
Johnny, what time, what time do you guys normally shut it down?
We shut down at ten o'clock. That's the city ordinance. So we do our very best to stop either before ten or right at ten. And we've got a decibel meter. We read it, we're typically between fifty-two and fifty-six. And the reading's supposed to be sixty or below, correct?
So are your, let me just ask real quick, are your, are your?
Well, our group is there Sunday, Monday, and Thursday nights. We're booking the weekend.
And are your, are your amplifiers turned toward like?
We've got them turned towards lolos. We've got all our speakers turned towards lolos. There's nobody there, he's closed at night. So we don't have any of our speakers turned towards.
But you got somebody who lives upstairs.
I'm sorry.
There's somebody who lives upstairs.
Yes, and they seem to enjoy it. They, they tell us how much they enjoy it.
How about aiming them at the atwater?
We haven't tried that.
Okay.
But I don't know that they would enjoy it as much with all the, with all the visitors there. I don't know what the hotel would think of that.
They're the island company, he's a landlord, so we'd see, because we talked to them. I know Denise has been in conversation with the island company on numerous occasions and also with Martine, who's right behind you.
Sure, yeah, you might have, have them get in touch with Martine, see if we can't do something about that. But like I said, we're doing our best to not be a nuisance to the neighborhood.
Okay, Martine's right behind you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Hi, City Council members. So I brought Johnny over because, you know, talk about live music is talking about Johnny, the noisy man. So, you know, I buy my own meter and then, believe me, you know, I got my bicycle and I ride around the streets by Mr. Winslow's house. And then the meter show like forty-six, forty-seven. I don't know if his meter is wrong or mine, but I mean, I have to do what my meter says. And then I mean, I respect everybody and then I, I don't try to be chasing my side. I just want to work this out. And then I can tell you guys something, you know, like I use the bands, I mean, on weekends we make, we make money. And then weekdays, believe me, I make enough money just to cover my expenses and to pay them on the three hours they play. You know, we used to play just Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And then Johnny called me one time, Martine, you know, why we don't try on Thursday? I said, Johnny, I don't, I don't think we can make enough money to, to cover you. He said, you know, if you don't make enough money to pay me, don't pay me. So guess what, you know, he, he came over and played. Okay, so he played for three hours. And I say, you know what, Johnny, I barely make money to pay you three fifty. And he take it, he goes, you know, it's better than nothing because I've been playing music all my life and I never make money. I just buy equipment and all that stuff, you know? And then now he played for me three times. And then I think he played two times on Metropole. So he says it's the first year in his life is making some money. I mean, him and his son and his partner right there. So I mean, what I'm looking and see if you guys can help us, I mean, we can turn the music little, I mean, more down if you guys, I mean, still supporting us. I mean, well, that's because, you know, this summer is so beautiful, you know, it's so nice to see people down there, kids, I mean, old people, you know, I was talking with a couple, the guy was ninety-two years old. I take a couple of pictures, I talk to him a little bit, he goes, you know, last time I danced with my wife, it was forty-two years ago.
Yeah.
Because, and I goes, why? He goes, there's no places to dance anymore. And I mean, I sent a couple of videos to Denise, I don't know if she show you guys, I mean, some videos with kids and old people and everything. And then I don't looking to be against the people who don't like live music, which is, I just want to work together, you know? Because we are in the same island and this is our town. And I mean, we all have to taking care of the place.
Right, okay.
So I mean, whatever your decision is, we're going to go for it. Thank you.
Yeah. I personally love live music. I think though where, where the, and where the, and I love the fact that, that our musicians who love, that is their talent, have a venue in which to play. I think that is great. I think where some of the big rub is, and I don't know, I don't go downtown and listen to your bands, I'm sorry, in the evening, however, and Mr. Winslow said it twice, it's the drums. And I hate to put, I hate to bring out Vern's name, but I think that's where a lot of the loud is. And he says people like it loud. Well, I think if, I would like to see it going, but if there is certain bands or whatever that are making it intolerable, then we, we don't stop live music, we stop them in some way. Because I, I know, because I can hear the drum solos over on Descanso. Not that I mind that, and I don't know if it's your band or Vern's or whatever, I don't pay attention what day of the week it is. But that kind of respect, you know, is, is, is great. There's a young guy who plays out at Martine sometimes too, right Martine? Some young man that plays out there? And I don't think there's ever going to complain about that guy. I don't know what he's playing with or whatever. But I would, and, and I don't know if Mr. Winslow, for example, and some of these people can say, oh yeah, it's just that Friday and Saturday night that are really killers or, or the Vern nights, I hate to call it the Vern nights, but Vern, or as if it actually is when the Vickers play, you know, I don't know. Or if you're saying it's seven days a week, I don't like any of it. That's a question for you, Mr. Winslow.
Can I respond?
Yeah, that's why I asked the question.
Well, as long as I've been here, we've always tried to have entertainment for resident, for the visitors. But those people that have signed a petition, all work, they have their dinner and the band starts. It's, it's six days a week, I believe. When it, when they don't play, we're so happy in our house, it's, it's, it's unbelievable. But when you close the doors and windows to, to keep the, the noise out, it gets hot and humid, especially during August and September. It's miserable. And I don't know what kind of decibel reader he's using, but I would invite anybody on the council to come to my house and sit on my balcony and listen to that. It's, it's, it's outrageous, this, the sound, the noise is, is terrible. And the person that lives above Abe's is so upset, he almost grabbed the petition out of my hand. He's not only upset about that, he's upset about the washer that they use after, after ten o'clock to clean up from whatever they, they have to clean up there, which I believe is also a violation. But if, if you come and see how loud it is, having them play one or two nights is still going to be against the Avalon Municipal Code. Because every single time they play, the band has a solo, it's a drum solo. And then they have a acoustic guitar and that spikes up to seventies. You can come over and see my decibel reader and use it and, and make up your own mind. But it is. but it is...